Yes, Stuart.
Here.
Vice President Yenazi.
Here.
Councilman Gregg.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Gross.
Here.
Councilwoman Sigda.
Here.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Here.
Mayor Reeves. I believe the mayor may be having trouble logging on, I heard.
I put out broccoli, tilapia, and potatoes to be cooked when you get here. Period.
Sounds good, John.
Yeah, it does sound good.
Don, are we still waiting on the mayor?
The mayor, I have not heard from the mayor yet. Chief, have you heard anything?
He told me he's having difficulty logging in.
Anybody, can anyone at least call him, maybe put him on speakerphone?
I don't see him.
Hello?
Don't cuss, we're trying to get you on, we're gonna have you on speakerphone, but you can't log in.
Okay.
Can everybody hear him? Can everybody hear him?
I have Mayor Reeves' count as here.
All right, all right Alan, you're in the meeting, but you're, you'll have to listen from my computer.
Go ahead, Bill.
Stevie G, just give us a quick update, I saw a couple people from the public have logged in. How are we handling the public participation? Can they, if we do the public forum, is it a matter of them sending an email to the borough manager?
I think, I think I'll refer to your solicitor on that. They're muted right now, there are some public folks on there right now, but I'll refer to your solicitor.
So, Bill, I believe the idea would be, once we get to public comment, then there's actually a little function here where they can raise their hand, and then Steve can just unmute each one for public comment, when we get to that point of the agenda.
But the borough did advertise that a public comment question should go by email to Dawn.
I have my computer up and ready.
Was this also listed in the Daily Times?
Our down-to-zoom meeting was...
Was this listed, the meeting tonight, in the Daily Times?
No, it was not.
We have a meeting scheduled for tonight.
Correct.
Peter can probably tell you, but I think we're still in the phase where we need to have a meeting, but we're not allowed to get together. Correct?
Oh, we're definitely, I mean, we're in that phase for a while. So the Borough Council should meet once a month under the Borough Code. We obviously can't get together. And to be clear, even though the Borough Code, on its face, requires a physical quorum and majority of council members, based on the governor's emergency order of March 6th, and our own emergency order, we're certainly meeting correctly, as, under the guidance of the Office of Open Records. There's a law under consideration, legislature, that'll make it clear that everyone can meet virtually. It has not been passed yet, but again, if it's not, we are, we are fine. In the future, you know, we can do some more advertising. Certainly, we are allowing for public comment at this point, and we'll post, recording of this meeting on the website will be sufficient right now, for, under the Office of Open Records guidance.
Well, if you'd like to get started, and John, in respect to your time, and we don't want the pot of potatoes to boil over, so Mr. Hattler, can you give us an update of where we stand on the 2018 and 2018 audit progress?
All right, the 2018 audit is completed. We are in process of issuing the report and the management letter. I want to thank Dawn, Peter, Joe, Mark, and Mike for getting this done. We were able to date it as of April 8th, and we were able to get all of our documents signed today. I want to thank Dawn again for the quick turnaround, and Peter for the quick, literal turnaround of one day, when I asked him for the legal letter. We ran into a little bit of a situation in that Sandy was only able to confirm any legal issues through December 31st. So what we then had to do was contact Peter, and Peter, literally, in a day, was able to turn it around and get us a legal letter response to covering the period January 1st through April 8th. So that was completed. Our next steps, again, are to issue the report this week and the management letter. And we have now commenced with the performance of the 2019 audit. We actually started fieldwork last Thursday. We have made various requests, and Dawn and Tina have been great, and I've also confirmed with Joe to some degree, and Mark has been helpful in getting this 2019 audit moving. We expect to do some serious testing tomorrow. My son's already made selections, Tina was just pulling them, I believe, today, and hopefully we'll have that done by tomorrow. But I know everybody was preparing for tonight's meeting, so I'm not expecting everything to be ready. At this point, Joe and I have been in contact regarding bank reconciliations. We are attempting to get that all squared away. There are some other issues, but we're working through those, as far as some items that appear on the balance sheet and the P and L, for, P and L being profit and loss, for 2019. We are looking at addressing that, and we're also looking at going and analyzing, obviously, real estate taxes, cash disbursements, revenue of various types, looking at the budget versus actual, looking at current versus prior year activity, meaning current being 2019 versus 2018. The only thing we're gonna run into on that one is the issue of the journal entries that we have submitted, and we submitted them yesterday, essentially, so they need to be incorporated into the 2018 QuickBooks, so that we can do a relevant comparison. And that's something that can be done over the next week or two. But we're making progress, and that's the important part. We are also, again, issuing the report and the management letter this week for 2018. Any questions?
One question I had was, I had spoken to Steve, and also, the version of QuickBooks that the borough is using is 2014, and we were going to upgrade that to 2020 QuickBooks. And Steve, do we, do we need to do some hardware work down there still, before we do that?
Yes, that computer is very old, that they've been using, so it obviously needs an upgrade. So probably the best bet would just be replace the hard drive, with a Windows 10 64-bit hard drive, and then upgrade the QuickBooks up to the latest version. That would be my recommendation.
What's the procedure? How do we coordinate to upgrade the QuickBooks? I assume we would just upgrade the QuickBooks and import the present files, is that true?
Yep, that's absolutely right. What you would do is install the QuickBooks on the old computer, update the files, back up the files, and then install the same version on a new Windows 10 hard drive, and then just transfer the data files over.
What kind of cost is associated with that, Steve?
Just the price of the hard drive, which is about 60 bucks, and a Windows 10 license, probably around 150 to do the whole thing.
Okay.
That's dirt cheap in this world.
Yeah, can we agree, let Steve go ahead with that?
Well, who's gonna operate the QuickBooks? Dawn doesn't know. Dawn doesn't know QuickBooks.
I think Steve was talking about installing it.
Well, I could install it, that's not an issue, but then, you know, operating it is a different story, so. I can get it installed, get the, get the PC upgraded, get it to where it needs to be, put the QuickBooks on there, and then just get it ready with whoever's going to have access to it.
Any more questions regarding the audits? At this time?
No.
I don't have any, John.
Nor I.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all very much, and stay safe.
You too.
Enjoy your dinner.
Ah, thank you. Very good. Take care, all.
Take care.
No, you're welcome. Take care, Mike. See you. Bye now.
Bill, are you there?
Do you have anybody in queue for public forum?
I do not. Do you have any message? I don't have any emails. Stevie G, are there any hands raised?
I will look, stand by.
Thank you. And if, just a reminder, if everyone could mute their voice until they're ready to speak, we're picking up a lot of background noises.
No, I don't see anyone.
Lisa, can you present the engineer's report?
I certainly can. You do have a copy of my report. Just a few things, we're hoping, once the quarantine breaks, that we'll be starting the sanitary sewer upgrades on, on Eddie Stone Avenue. We are planning on having a pre-construction meeting this week. That will be a virtual meeting. Colleen will get the, all the information. OHCD wants to keep the process moving, as they've got to actually get money spent while this pandemic quarantine is happening, although we can't have the contractors working, because they haven't gotten waivers. Quite frankly, Potany Engineering was just denied today of a waiver to, to work. So we've got municipalities and emergency work, that we're sending our guys out, although the governor says we can't, which doesn't make much sense to me, but we're gonna still follow his, his guidance, and hopefully, we complete our case if we are in an emergency, and I've been out on two since this has happened, so it's going to continue to happen. The Dunkin' Donuts project, I want to give you just a very quick update. We did a plan review, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, in particular with third parties. And what I mean by that is Conrail, Amtrak, SEPTA. There's a lot of, of information and improvements that are going to be done, that are going to impact those three, in particular, companies, businesses, organizations, whatever you want to call it, and we haven't seen any, any success from the last set of plans in getting that completed. So we're still on a holding pattern. Alliance, I'm expecting any day now to get a, a final package from Alliance. We've had several meetings, phone conversations, phone conferences with the polar engineering, trying to get those final issues resolved, so that should be coming shortly. We did receive a plan from Industrial Highway LLC, that we are in process of reviewing. We have not gotten anything as far as the traffic is concerned, and the, we're waiting for comments from my, my traffic consultant before we send a formal letter to the engineering firm to get that moving. We will have to have a planning commission meeting with regard to that Industrial Highway LLC. That will need to happen probably once the quarantine breaks. Penn Terminals, you have on your agenda. There's a letter that I sent. We did a final inspection. This is for the SADO, this is for the land development, this is not for building permit. We did the final inspection, there are some issues with the building permit side. Our inspector has got three things that need to be completed before he can send something to Matt. Matt will issue a certificate of occupancy, once those items are resolved. But as far as the SADO is concerned, they have completed the work with regard to the land development. We can release money, I have a request or a recommendation to release all but 10%, because the only punch list item that we had left is an ASBIL. If you recall, they had to extend the storm sewer through the bulkhead. So we need an ASBIL, because what was done out there was not what they installed, or how they installed it. So we want to make sure that we have the ASBIL done for that. So I'm recommending that Esper release in the amount of $15,196.50. That leaves $1,688, which is the 10% contingency, to get that ASBIL done. I believe they can get it done for that. There's a letter that, that I sent, indicating two Penn Terminals that had to be sent by certified mail, that has gone out. I took it to the, to the post office this morning, that's gone out, certified mail. What you need to do is counsel, it's part of the MPC, is you have to acknowledge that punch list. Again, it's only the ASBIL drawing is missing. And then you will need to send it to, to Penn Terminals as well, within 10 days of, of tonight. So that will need to get done. That needs to be by certified mail as well. The R-CAP grant, I haven't heard anything when that's going in. Need to start working on those, those applications with the chief. The DCNR grant, we have that probably about 60% complete. If anyone knows of, of support letters, we got one from, from the school district. We received one from the youth group. Anyone else that you can think of that utilizes that building, that would, would be able to send a letter of support, we will add those to the application. That gives us points, so we'd like to get as many as we can. And if somebody wants to give us $100,000, then even better. I don't know whether that'll happen or not. I also am asking this evening for an okay to put together a 2020 road program. I don't know how much, at this point, is available for, for a milling and paving project. I have spoken to, to, to Mr. Stewart last week, to see whether or not it was something that would interest council. So if we are going to do that, I'd like to get it done now. We're getting prices of $88 a ton, where last year we paid almost $110 a ton for, for paving material. So if we can get that together, I think it would behoove us to do it now, not later. I believe that is all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
No, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Are you there, Bill?
Yeah, I'm here. Joe or Mike, just a quick question. How much money in liquid fuels do we currently have? So Lisa's got an idea of the amount of money that's available for a road program.
On your statement, there's $68,000 in the March, we got our 2020 allocation on deposits. You're, you're well over 120 grand.
What, what I'm going to do is, I'll put the list together, we'll send it out, everybody can, can, we can prioritize it. We can prioritize it, and then council, it's your, it's your call which roads you want to do. We'll, we'll try to set it up, so, we won't try to set up, we'll set it up so that it's block by block, so that you'll be able to say, we're either gonna do a whole street, or we're only gonna do a block of the street. Remember, it's much more efficient if we can do lengths of streets, and not a little, as I call them postage stamps, all around the, the community. It's cheaper for us in the long run.
Well, aren't we gonna try to get Conrail or somebody to do underneath the, the bridge down on Eddie Stone Avenue?
We, we had a meeting with Conrail two months ago, maybe, month and a half ago. They did do some work. I haven't been down to take a look at it, but Mr. Stewart knew that they were down working there. It is not their bridge that is causing the issue. As if you recall, there's a wall there as well. It's actually Amtrak, and we've not had much success in getting to Amtrak, to get somebody out there to take a look at, at the water problem. So I wouldn't put Eddie Stone Avenue or Seville Avenue under the bridge in that road report, at this point, till we, we know where Amtrak stands with it.
Thanks, now you answer my question.
I have a question, Lisa. Is she there?
I am here.
Oh, okay, I couldn't see you. Can you use that money for that issue in the alley between 12th and 11th Street? Remember, they had an issue when they're driving up the alley there?
I remember it all too well, Mrs. Gross. I will tell you that, that you would spend more than what you have in liquid fuels to fix that issue, because we would end up having to reconstruct that alley, and the cross-sections of that alley, as well as the, the intersection of 11th and the alley.
Yeah, but that is something that we really have to put funds away for.
I will tell you that I have driven that, and you know what kind of car I drive, and it's a very low car, and if you're going 15 miles an hour, you're not hitting bottom.
Right, right.
So, remember, this is an alley, this is not a street, so.
Right, right.
You don't have the same requirements for an alleyway as you have for, for a street alignment.
Ah, thanks.
Any other questions for Lisa? Moving along, I see that there's no open write-in, no requests, so everything's been satisfied. Peter, if you can give us an update on the amendment to the garbage ordinance?
Certainly. So at our last meeting, I think before March, it seems like two years ago now, Vice President Yenazi asked me to look into amending our ordinance and the collection of refuse to include some nonprofit organizations, I believe the veterans organizations and the churches. And our section 251-17, you know, says refuse shall be collected at least twice a week from all residences within the borough of Eddie Stone. It is within council's authority to add and nonprofit veterans and religious organizations to that section. However, we used, you know, we use Delaware County to, to process our garbage, and they have their own regulations when it comes to this. And I am concerned about them charging the borough substantially more, if we, if we pick up from these organizations. I know they had said to Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, but you know, if we pick up from the veterans organizations, you know, they're gonna charge everything we pick up as commercial versus residential, which would be substantially more. In addition, our garbage truck has an M sticker on it from the county, from municipal, and they make it very clear in their regulations that if a truck with an M sticker on it is picking up commercial refuse, that there'll be fines involved. So I'm concerned that, well, you can certainly say that we'll pick up trash, that the county, that, again, that we use to process the garbage, is gonna start charging the borough a lot more. And I don't have those exact figures, as you can imagine, everything is kind of difficult to get through at the county, but that's, that's where we are with the amended trash.
Can you, can you tell me how, how significant the charges will increase?
I, I can't, off the top, I, I don't know the figures. I don't know whether Dawn knows that.
I also have a question. Have the bars been notified that we will no longer carry, pick up their bottles? Their, you know, beer bottles and stuff?
Oh yeah, I think Kevin went and talked to everybody, right, Dawn?
With the Delaware County Solid Waste, and who they advised Kevin in our streets department, Kevin did stop to tell each and every one who was on that list, from Delaware County Solid Waste.
Okay, so I think it's probably best to, to table the idea until next meeting, and then use the, the next month to petition our, our county council members, to see if maybe they can do something, and then, and then amend our, our ordinance. Is, is that acceptable?
If I, if I may, if you do a, a 902, which is your performance grant, you should have numbers from each one of those, those different commercial, because you're filling out those forms every year, so you should be able to, to get that information rather easily, if they are providing it, which is required to do under the ordinance.
Oh, thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
All right, yeah, I can, I can work with Dawn, and at least we can get those numbers, and then whoever wants to talk to county council can do that before next meeting.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I know you said Kevin wanted these bars, but I would like to see them get a follow-up letter about, you know, why we're not collecting the bottles anymore, for them, beer bottles?
Yeah, they need, they deserve to know.
Absolutely.
I do believe they have the containers down at the disposal plant still for the bottles.
I can hear them.
What's that one?
Yeah, talking to the borough division, they put their bottles down there if they want.
Who picks that up, the county?
That's, they send the tractor trailer.
Could you repeat what he said?
Yeah.
Yes, they have the igloos down by the highway department for the bottles and stuff, and the county comes in with the tractor trailer and picks that up. So the VFW...
Well, I mean, the, the VFW's been a, a really good partner in our neighborhood, even donating to the police and fire departments, and I don't think it's fair for us to, because of our political infighting, to make them have to bring all their, their, their stuff down there after we made a deal with them.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, I don't think it's political infighting, Rob.
I think it is. I think you're, I think you're wrong.
No, you're not, you're wrong. You're wrong.
I'm absolutely right.
No, Bill Dawes is a good guy, we know that.
Yeah, I know he's a good guy, too.
Yeah, from experience, he is a good guy. He's a wonderful man.
We should do everything in our power to take care of him, is what I'm saying.
Well, aren't we doing that?
I don't believe we are, if we're not able to take his recycling like we, we had promised him.
But we're not, what, you're saying that we're not gonna take his recycling?
I'm saying that, yeah. I'm saying that the trash in his recycling isn't gonna get picked up by us.
Oh, you, oh, you want him to, want us to pick it up, too, right?
Yeah, that's what I want to do. I want to change the ordinance to, so we're able to pick up from, from all the veterans organizations and the churches.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, none of us had a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't know where you think we're gonna have a problem.
There's no, there's no, there's no problem, we just have to make sure that the, the current problem is, is the regulations at the county. Am I, am I right, Peter?
That's, that's correct, and, and so we can take a look at the figures from the, the 902 form that Lisa suggested, and if I can get ahold of somebody from the county, I can do that. But you're right, the problem is that there's county regulations about what they'll accept, and what they will charge the borough.
So what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna table this discussion until the next meeting, and we're gonna petition the county council to change their rules, so that we can change ours.
Sounds good.
All right, moving forward to action items, entertain a motion to approve the council workshop meeting from March 2nd. And Dawn, what we'll do is just a roll call on everything, so we can capture everything appropriately on the video. So I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for 3:2.
No.
No.
I'll tell you why, Bill. Dawn doesn't have me listed as being at that meeting, and I was. And, uh, on page 2 of the March 2nd meeting, which I'm not listed as being a part of, in the minutes, Kelly's last name is Mulaney, not Maloney.
So Karen, if I may, you can move to, you know, make these amendments to the minutes and then they can be approved with those amendments if, if council desires.
That's fine, I wanna fix that, because I didn't miss any meeting.
Sure, I think that's fair, so, so it's to add your attendance and to correct the spelling of Mullany's-
Kelly Mullany, M-U-L-L-A-N-Y, not Maloney.
Any other amendments to the minutes?
Uh, no, I think that one's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. So then i- if somebody wants to-
To incorporate the amendments from Councilwoman Reeves, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Dawn, just give me a roll call, please.
Second.
Thank you, Beth. Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Glenn? Just unmute it.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn. President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Passes seven.
All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of March 9th, 2020. I have a second, a motion.
Just, I don't know how to handle this, but in public comment, Mr., uh, Mr. Tenny said that he lives at 907 Seville Avenue, and I know that's what he said at the meeting, but apparently he does not live there, and, uh, that could be an issue because he's supposed to be living in Chester because he's a registered sex offender, correct?
Are you legally allowed to put that stuff out?
Yes. Well, you're not gonna put it in the minutes.
This means going in the minutes.
At least as far as the minutes go, if that's what he said, that's what he said. I mean, I, you know, that's, if that's not actually correct, we're not saying that's correct. We're just saying that's what he said at the meeting.
I'm bringing it up because people questioned whether he was living there or not, and we were told that he was not living there. So, if people read these minutes, that might become an issue, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing that's what was said at the meeting. So, I'll approve the minutes, I just wanted to point that out.
Can I please go back and find out who, um, made the motion and who was the second, because I could not clearly hear that?
I said so, order, Dawn.
Thank you, who's second? Beth?
Yes, honey.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
President Stewart? Can you unmute yourself, Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Peter, procedurally, you know, because we're gonna be doing a roll call vote because of the format of the meeting, do we need to have a, a, a motion and a second on the, on the, uh, action item, or can we just go with a roll call?
Well, you, you always need a, a motion and a second before anything is considered, so I, I would have a motion and a second.
Understood. Uh, can, uh, one of the percentes please deliver the, uh, treasurer's report?
Yeah, General Fund, Sharon Bank, for March 2020, $167,840.32. Sewer Fund, WSFS Bank, $86,506.2. Liquid Fuel Fund, WSFS Bank, $68,744.24. And the Beautification Fund, Sharon Bank, $3,837.50. For a grand total of $326,888.8 as of March 31st, 2020.
Unmute, Bill.
Council, you've heard the treasurer's report, I'll take a motion to approve.
So ordered.
Second.
So that's, uh, motion by Councilwoman Reeves, second by Councilwoman Gross, roll call, Ms. Jones.
Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn. President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Thank you, seven zero.
Council, entertain a motion for the approval of the cash receipts and dispersments journal.
So ordered.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Pocente, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones.
Doctor, yes, for the cash receipts and dispersments. Uh, Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Unanimous, seven zero.
Chief. Chief Macheski, can you deliver the police report, please?
I'm sorry, Mr., uh, Mr. President, I cannot. Uh, I was on the assumption my report was disseminated to each member of council, won't have to read it out tonight. I do not have a copy home with me.
Correct, Bill, you had, uh, suggested we would, um, suggest to accept the police report and accept the fire report since we're all working remotely, that's why it was distributed by email.
You want me to read it?
Ms. Reeves, please read it.
Uh, calls for service, 357, citations, 23. Uh, do you want the year to date too?
I'm good with just the month.
Okay. Accidents, uh, two industrial that were reportable, uh, three commercial that were non-reportable, four residential that were non-reportable. Theft, 16 commercial, one residential for a total of 17. Parking tickets for the month, 69. Criminal arrests for the month, 22.
Chief, I understand you did have a resignation of a full-time officer, um, that I'd like to counsel to be aware of.
Yes, we, yes, we received a resignation law from Officer Sweet, uh, who is pursuing another career other than law enforcement. He's one of our full-time officers. Uh, his, uh, resignation, um, actually takes effect in three days on the 16th.
And also, we had a, um, part-time officer that was, uh, uh, offered a full-time position in other municipalities, am I correct? Yaden?
Yeah, yes, also Martha had resigned, uh, I thought I had his resignation last meeting, maybe I did not. Uh, he resigned to pursue full-time in Yaden, yes.
So, Chief, are you, uh, what's the procedure in regards to filling that, that full-time position? Are you gonna take one of the part-timers and offer him the position?
Uh, unfortunately, I cannot. Uh, we have to administer a civil service test. Uh, so what I would suggest to council is to maybe start a civil service commission, put them on notice, and after this quarantine event is over, we can start the process.
Can we get that put on the, uh, the agenda for next month?
I would, I would like it to be, if possible.
Did the police attend any EMT calls this, uh, this time?
Uh, Mr. Wilson, um, we have, we changed our procedures because of the pandemic. Police personnel are not responding on EMS calls unless said requested by EMS to kind of risk the exposure of all of emergency services. Mr. Stewart, I believe you're, you're muted still.
I think, uh, I think he's going through a, uh, a frozen spot. There he is. Bill?
No, I'm fro- I'm frozen right now.
We can hear ya.
We can hear ya. I, I'm gonna suggest that we put on the next, uh, agenda, uh, the, uh, creating the civil service, uh, commission, unless we can do that now.
Wait a minute, what did you?
We have a civil service in place, I, I believe we may need to fill one or two spots. Um, I know one of the commissioners, uh, Mr. Wright, has since moved out of town, so he's no longer eligible to participate. So what I recommend is, is we'll go through the, uh, roster of those commissioners who are still eligible to serve. If we need to fill in the blanks, we'll, we'll appoint one or two commissioners. And, um, we've gone through the process on multiple occasions for the hiring of full-time police officers, so once the pandemic restrictions are lifted, uh, we can get an advertisement in the, uh, newspaper of general circulation and, and move forward with the, uh, process of hiring a full-time officer. Any, uh, any questions of the police report? And I don't believe we've taken action, correct?
No.
So if I can entertain a motion to accept the police report, please?
So ordered.
Seconded.
Ms. Jones, roll call. Then I got, uh, Councilwoman Reeves and, uh, Vice President Yunuzi.
Yunuzi, yep. All right, to accept the police report, Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Seven to zero, unanimous. Thank you.
Chief Burke, I may, I thought I saw you on the call or on the video conference, uh, you able to deliver the fire report for March?
The fire report for March is going to be, uh, calls of non-alarms. Four building fires, one cover-up, one investigation, one motor vehicle accident, two trainings, one water rescue. Total calls in Eddystone were four, uh, mutual aid assistance was one, Tinacum one, Chester three, Woodland one. Four, four day calls and five night calls. Total average members, uh, or total members, 35. Average 3.8 per call. Total EMS calls were 38. 11 transports, four refusals, two cancellations, and one QRS. 20 EMS incidents for, uh, handled by mutual aid. Forty percent, 47% of calls were handled in Eddystone, and 53 were handled by others. And as always, we need volunteers.
Any questions to Chief Burke before we call for action? Entertain a motion?
Did we do the MS?
Like, he did, I believe he did the EMS.
Sorry, I must have lost my place then. Can I ask how many EMTs we currently have, uh, employed? I understood that we lost a couple because their, their full-time employer told them they couldn't work part-time in another place.
Ali, you still on the call?
Yes, sir. Uh, we do have a few that, um, were asked not to work their part-time job due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we currently have two that are out. Everyone else has been trying their best to work the shifts that we've, uh, have available, and, um, again, I would like to, uh, thank Chief Macheski, uh, for working with us, um, with getting supplies, working with the police to make sure that everyone's safe in this pandemic.
Could I just ask how many EMS we have on, EMTs we have on staff right now?
Uh, Dawn, I believe it's seven, correct, on payroll?
I believe that is correct.
And does that, does that include the two that, uh, are currently can't take work?
That's correct.
And there's always two EMTs on call to go out?
What's your question, Beth?
Are there, when you send the ambulance out, are there two EMTs going out?
That's correct, two certified EMTs to send the ambulance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the fire report, please.
I'll move.
Tag it.
Tag it.
Was that Stan and Beth?
Yep.
Yes.
It was me, Dawn.
It was me.
I'm sorry, Chris, thank you.
No problem.
Oh, it was Stan and Beth.
All right, do a roll call for the motion to accept the fire report. Councilman Sigda?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yunuzi?
Yes.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Unanimous, seven zero, thank you.
Matt, are you still on the call to deliver the, uh, BCL report for the month of March?
Yes, I am. So, for the much, month of March, um, due to it being unprecedented much, a month, the numbers are down, of course, uh, since we were completely shut down. Um, so residential work permits, uh, we have six permits, 10 inspections performed. Commercial, we had seven permits issued, two inspections performed. Contractors licenses, we received 10. COs, four rental operating licenses. We performed 14 inspections, uh, off of three licenses received. For totals of 26 inspections, two-stop work orders, 13 permits issued, eight license, or, I'm sorry, 10 licenses issued for $45,721.50. Dawn and I have been working to notify those contractors that are working that we are made aware of that the governor's orders state no work at all unless emergency work, unless they have a waiver. Um, there's only a few people that have received waivers, as Lisa stated earlier. Some people are getting them, some people are not. Uh, we at Barrezette got them for emergency person, person, or purposes only. We can't go out and do normal routine stuff like come down to the Borough Hall, uh, and work out of there. But we did receive to go out on emergency issues like that, or sewers, fires, stuff like that. Um, I also stayed, as stated in the last meeting, I would have the report from December. If I'm able to share my screen, am I able to, Stevie?
Yeah, for whatever reason, Matt, that was put on the March workshop meeting, but then taken off for the regular meeting.
Okay, you guys see it, do you guys see that right there? This is what was distributed to, to everyone in February, uh, the meeting that I was not in attendance for. So I, I would like to include with the report for this month, the, to approve the December report as well, um, as stated in- As stated in the last meeting, that I would provide this to you again.
Thank you, Matt, for reporting that. I was wondering if there was a reason why it wasn't actually in the February meeting. However, you weren't at the February meeting and then you were at the March meeting. It was on, like I said, the workshop agenda, but was taken off for the regular meeting. It almost seemed like council didn't want it read, maybe because of the amount of money that John brought in for the month of December. Like, how do you justify getting rid of somebody that brings in over a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for you?
So that's not what I'm here for, but I'm just letting you know, this is the report here.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it up.
So that is the report for December. In December, I'll just go through the totals, total number of inspections performed, fifty-one, stop work orders, four, number of permits issued, sixteen, number of licenses issued, eight, for a total of one thirty-four, four sixteen, and seventy-one cents. So with my report on March tonight, I would like you guys to entertain.
Internet is unstable.
Would like you guys to entertain the December report as well.
Thank you, Matt, for taking care of it.
Not a problem.
If you can hear me, great job, Matt.
Counsel, entertain a motion to accept both the December two thousand nineteen as well as the March two thousand twenty BCL reports as presented by Barrezette.
So moved.
Two second.
Yep.
It wasn't?
I did.
Beth, roll call, or I'm sorry, yeah, roll call, please.
You got it. For BCL's report for the month of December and for December twenty-nineteenth and March twenty-twenty. Councilman Sigda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
President Stewart.
Yes.
Vice President Yanazi.
Yes.
Councilman Sprague.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Yes.
Unanimous seven zero. Thank you.
Hey, Matt, are you still here?
Yes, sir. What can I help you with?
I just wanted to ask, I tried to ask before, but I had myself muted. When it says number of work permits issued, are we only issuing work permits that are considered emergency, things like a stopped-up sewer line or something like that, or what?
So myself and my company, we are set up to do electronic permitting. Dawn and I have been accepting permits if people drop them off or if people contact us and send them to us electronically. The permits will only be issued for those with waivers.
Contractor would have a waiver?
Correct. Waiver as per the governor of the state. The.
Is it based on whether the contractor has a waiver or is it based on what the nature of the repair is?
Excuse me, you're being drowned out.
Okay. The contractor having a waiver or is it based on what the nature of the repair is?
So right now, there is to be no residential work at all, other than those with waivers, which were withdrawn, or people received waivers, then they were withdrawn by the governor to continue work. Some have been issued as early as today. Waivers to proceed with work other than new work. So we're not digging footers and foundations, we're not creating new structures. It's more of the securing the properties for water damage, securing the properties for entry, and if they can do inside work, they're doing inside work as whatever they submit for and then get approved for by the governor. We are requesting both their application, which is actually kind of hard because it's only a Google Forms webpage without a save or print feature. It's just a submit button. But everybody that we have been talking to, we're getting their letter or notification to DCED or the governor's office as well as a copy of their letter and prior to even open up discussions of issuing permits or doing inspections.
Right. So if a resident sees someone working on the house across the street and they think that somebody's violating the, what is it, stop work order? Not the stop work order, but you know.
The stay-at-home order per the governor.
Should they be able to call the borough and give that address and we would know if they were having work done? Because I assume that they could also be having work done that doesn't require a permit, correct?
Correct. So what has been happening is when we are notified of it, whether it be Borough Hall or myself through the phone number or email that is on the website, we are going out and making contact with them at a safe distance, of course, but we are making contact and notifying them and citing them if they continue to work.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
No problem.
I'll contact you tomorrow, Matt, with another address for you.
Thank you.
Could I get some clarification on what the law entails in regards to the codes enforcement? I'm getting, I think I heard Councilwoman Reeves talk about how previous code enforcement brought in a hundred and thirty-plus thousand dollars. And I've also heard other people say that we're unable, where codes enforcement is not allowed to bring in a profit for the town, it can't be used for that. Clarify for me, Peter?
I mean, I don't think anybody's applying that we're trying to make a profit. I mean, I think the fees are the fees. I know the borough has set permit fees. And as long as we're charging those fees, that's fine. I suppose very ice it might be charging more than our last person for various reasons, and maybe there's a difference there. Whether Matt could clarify that, but I mean, I think we just have permit fees and that's what we charge.
But it's not a revenue source.
That's what I was getting at. Like, is it illegal to be a revenue source?
It'd be illegal if you're charging for permits for things that do not require permits, if that were to take place.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Looks like the next action item is to change or make the approval of adding Dawn Jones, myself, and Chris Sprague as signers on the accounts for Eddie Stone Borough.
Is everybody going to be bonded?
You don't have to be to be a signer, Beth.
You don't?
No.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Got a motion made and seconded. Ms. Jones, roll call.
Yes. Councilman Sigda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
President Stewart.
Yes.
Vice President Yanazi.
Yes.
Councilman Sprague.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves.
No.
Six to one. Motion passes.
Council prior to taking action on the feasibility study for Lighthouse Hall, does anybody have any questions for Lisa for the reason why this resolution needs to be approved?
No questions.
No.
Have a motion to approve, please.
So ordered.
Seconded.
Roll call.
I believe that was Councilwoman Reeves and Councilwoman Gross.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Sigda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
My thing's unstable, I keep reporting on my laptop.
And do you approve the DCNR Lighthouse Hall feasibility test?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
President Stewart. Bill.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Yanazi.
Yes.
Councilman Sprague.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Yes.
Seven to zero unanimous.
Motion to approve the resolution for the liquid fuels expenditures.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Yes, liquid fuels municipal resolution. Councilman Sigda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
President Stewart.
Yes.
Vice President Yanazi.
Yes.
Councilman Sprague.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ms. Jones, can you just brief council very quickly on the purpose of the Chester Pike Task Force and the advantages that the borough of Eddie Stone would have in participating in their coalition?
Certainly, and I will ask Lisa also to provide any knowledge of this because I was just invited to the meeting prior to all this COVID happening. And as of now, there are five participating boroughs that make up the Chester Pike Corridor Improvement Partners, which is a 501(c) nonprofit corporation. They include Glen Olden, Norwood, Prospect Park, Ridley Park, and Sharon Hill. overview is each participating borough signed a resolution to work together. Basically, a memorandum of understanding attached information for the multi-municipal collaborative to cooperate and coordinate with one another on projects, including economic development, quality of life, and structural and public safety improvement along the Chester Pike Corridor. And have agreed services and funding would be provided by the collaborative through the application of grants. Additionally, some of the boroughs have signed a complete streets resolution, which helps give more weight when grant applications are scored. Working in concert with the Delaware County Planning Department, the next step is to have a Chester Pike Corridor master plan done to identify the vision, what the overall goal will be, what the goal is for each borough, recommendations and projects. As part of the master plan, there will be a public meeting held at each of the five boroughs plus three full public meetings to discuss the effort, gather the information and comments, and finally share the culmination of the master plan. The Chester Pike Corridor proposed updates will take into consideration sustainable materials and energy-efficient lighting. Anticipated projects will include improving safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, children, older citizens, non-drivers, and the mobility challenge, as well as those that cannot afford a car or choose to live car-free. Providing connections to bicycling and walking trip generators such as employment, education, residential, recreation, retail center, and public facilities. Promoting healthy lifestyles, creating more livable communities, reducing traffic congestion and reliance on carbon fuels. The cost that has been paid by the other boroughs as of today was each borough contributed one thousand dollars towards the formation of the Chester Pike Corridor Improvement Partners. Each borough equally shares the cost of BBMP's contract. Each borough pays five hundred dollars towards the monthly cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. With the addition of six participating boroughs, the cost would be four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. Delaware County Planning Department's Chester Pike Master Plan proposal is that the plan includes mapping and will analyze current roadways, arteries, safety volume, and traffic, design physical improvements, transit, land use, zoning, economic conditions, existing business activity, potential new business, redevelopment, and will identify where improvements are needed and where tax credits can be used for buildings that need work. A vision will be established to identify improvements that are common to the municipalities, where there is an overlap in needs, as well as individually along the corridor. The participating boroughs will also be able to offer the recommendations in addition to the participating boroughs. SEPTA, Amtrak, and Pendott will be engaged in the process. Basically, this group would like to know if Eddie Stone would finally like to get in to the revitalization of the Chester Pike Corridor, since all of these other municipalities have been engaged for some time.
If I may, let me kind of give you a simple answer on all of this. Way back when Glen Olden Borough, am I, are you hearing me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I thought somebody said you couldn't hear me. Glen Olden Borough, along with four of the other municipalities that were mentioned, got together just to talk about how can we help each other because everybody has the same goal on Chester Pike to upgrade the streetscape, number one, for economic development and safety. The first meeting, we sat down and everybody went around the room. What is it that you want to say? What's your priority? And of course, it's livability and safety of pedestrians and bringing some aesthetics to it. Hopefully, it'll help the businesses and bring better business into Chester Pike. Glen Olden was a little bit ahead of the curve because they had already had BBNT doing a study and they were ready to go into grant writing for some of the work that they wanted to do. Because they want to do sidewalks and curbs, street lighting and landscaping throughout their entire corridor. The rest of the municipalities hadn't gotten that far, which is why we've all stepped back and Glen Olden's stepped back from all of it. We're going to do a master plan. The reason we're doing a 501(c)(3) is that based on the BBNT, who's one of their principals, Mary Bathia, actually is a former DCED, the Economic Development Department from Pennsylvania. She has a lot of contacts with DCD. They had a meeting with DCD. DCD said it'd be much better off if you did a 501(c)(3), which is where we are right now. So five municipalities are put in. Fallcroft Borough was also maybe a seventh in this group. The previous council in Fallcroft chose not to be involved in it. The new council in Fallcroft is looking at it differently and may be joining the organization as well. So what they're looking for at this point, this Chester Pike Corridor Investment Partners is what this group is considered as already organized 501(c)(3). We are working with the planning department. The engineers for each one of the municipalities are putting together projects. If you go on to the Delaware County Planning Department website, you'll start seeing little pins in the map. And it actually has various projects that we're all looking for individually as a community. So there'll be one large project. So, for example, a multimodal grant might be available. That may be solely for, under the CFA grant, for sidewalks and curbs. There may be green light go where we look at upgrading intersections for traffic signals. And each time, the 501(c)(3) will work on behalf of each one of the municipalities. So when the first meeting, as we talked about it, I suggested that they invite Eddie Stone because I know what we were looking to do a few years ago. So I was kind of surprised but happy that I saw Dawn when I walked into the room because I didn't know that they had done that. So I was kind of surprised but happy that I saw Dawn when I walked into the room because I didn't know that they had done that that invitation. So that's where things are, and I hope I didn't take too long, and I hope I made it a little bit clearer of what the purpose of all of this is.
Lisa, I have a question for you. Isn't there a cost, though, involved with being involved with this task force?
Yeah, and that's what Dawn was talking about earlier. The initial commitment is is $1,000, which five of the municipalities already put that up, and that's to get the 501(c)(3). We still need to put a a bank account together. And there is there is the commitment of the $500 from each municipality currently that is involved for the BBT contract. They're out of Harrisburg. They're working with with the group to kind of coordinate things. They've talked to all of the the representatives and the senators in in the state and in our areas, trying to determine what makes sense, what doesn't, and how we can best get funding for all these projects.
Can I make a statement, a question, statement, both? Lisa?
You can do whatever you want. I'm here just to answer.
Oh, cool. I sweet. I wanted to know when, since everyone's going in on this, how much real estate does Eddie Stone have on Chester Pike? Is it from the?
From the creek down to Eddie Stone Avenue.
We are to the creek.
To the bridge.
From the crack.
Creek to creek.
Baldwin Towers or Eddie Stone Cross.
Creek.
I got a question. What? So does it does it cost the five the $5,000 to start a 501(c)(3)? What's the purpose of the $5,000?
It was for the legal fees and the the corporate.
I mean, if we look at.
I'm there. I'm I am not. I am there solely as the.
I know.
For Prospect Park and for Norwood.
Right.
And for Fallcroft Borough at this point. We actually represent Ridley Park Borough as well. But, you know, I'm telling you what I know from being at the meetings. I don't have any any say in.
Oh, yeah.
They're from BBNT.
But would it be feasible for us? I mean, if we only have, what, how many feet of Chester Pike? I mean, we got the church, we got the rectory, like some areas. We can do.
Township, Beth.
Oh, that's right. So we only have one side.
We only have one side of the street, right.
Yeah, and then you got, there's not much here. Lisa, we looked in, we looked into that before, and I thought that it was going to be too costly.
We put. We put an application in a while back for for some funding for planning for a streetscape along Chester Pike, and we weren't successful in getting that. That was through a community development lock grant.
I'm still kind of kind of shocked about this this amount of money that's going to cost for the 501(c)(3) registration. It doesn't make any sense to me. Like, I I started a 501(c)(3) and I didn't.
I can read you what I have, okay? This is this is dated back in December of 2019, and this is from BBNT. Over the past few months, the Chester Pike Task Force has discussed the benefits of forming a nonprofit, which would allow for equal opportunities for each participating borough, as there will be no borough leading the project. So each borough will have one vote, so it's not based on population or miles or whatever. But there's a project, and it's a good project for the benefit of the entire corridor, it will get done because you'll have the votes to get that done. As Delaware County Planning Department has agreed to help foster the initiative, and a nonprofit would oversee the project tasks. Each borough was asked for a commitment of $1,000 to cover the legal costs of forming a 501(c)(3). That's all I have. How that number came about, I don't know. It's not anything that was that anybody sat down at the meeting and said, this is what it's going to cost.
So that that number go, like, who's who's doing, who are those legal fees going to?
I don't know the answer to that. Some attorney. I don't know.
You're sharing.
I don't have the answer to that.
You're sharing.
Yeah.
Comment, please? I, this is something, I think getting involved in these things is a very good thing to do, and it's exactly what we should be doing. However, at the moment, I'm still being told that we don't have money to pay bills. And I would suggest that we table this and talk about it next next month because maybe the 2019 audit will be done by then.
I don't have a problem table it until we get some additional information. Anybody else have an objection table in it?
No.
It's fine.
We'll consider the action tabled. Last order of business this evening is the appointment of part-time EMTs. And before I lose, I don't know if I might lose an audio or not. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Peter, if I could have you jump in, brief counsel on the research you've done regarding whether a part-time employee is eligible or not eligible for heart and lung benefits.
Sure. So you asked me to look into this, not so much the part-time status, but heart and lung benefits are for law enforcement officers of of all stripes, certainly our police. But there's all kinds of, you know, law enforcement officers. EMTs are not law enforcement officers. So so they would not be eligible for the heart and lung benefit that police officers are eligible for. And these are hard-time employees without benefits. So that's that's what's before counsel tonight.
Heart and lung comes under fire and police. Fire and police.
All right. I mean, I I hear you, man. We've looked into it, and it just it's there's very I mean, there's there's like 13 different categories under heart and lung, and none of which are are EMTs.
Well, they're they're actually firefighters also, according to their schedule. Firefighter slash EMT. That's what they're scheduled as.
Did these individuals get their physicals?
We've taken a look at whether or not there's any physicals, and unfortunately, with the EMS, it's there's there's nothing like MOPAC has a standard physical that they give all police officers. There is no standard across-the-board physical available for EMS. So it's basically whether or not your personal care physician has has ruled you to be in good health.
Yeah, because you said you were going to make them get physicals.
Again, we looked into the possibility of having them get physicals. However, there is no baseline physical that's available or that we've been able to find for EMPs.
Is Joe Pisani still on? Joe, you still on? I would like to check with Joe because right now I don't think there's any money coming in. You don't have people working. You're not getting your 1%. The tax tax money's coming in late because, you know, tax collector had approved it, you know, whatever in court. I think that right now, timing's not good to hire anybody.
But that's my concern. That truly is my concern.
There's no money coming in right now.
I think that's already been decided by counsel at a prior time that we were going to hire these people.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, Glenn.
Time is different, though.
Joe, are you there?
I think the timing is different now with this virus.
Joe, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, me.
Yeah, we have no money coming in right now.
Real estate taxes, you're trying to get caught up with. So on the discount period. So that's coming in. You see, you had $167,000 at the end of March. We're studying the earned income tax. We feel a hit in the third and fourth quarter because, you know, if people aren't working, they're not contributing to the one our biggest line item. And, you know, as Matt's special piece, you're not, you're not bringing, you know, so it's still cash wise, but still coming in.
I'm concerned about the finances, Joe.
Into the borough as well. They're going to be, they're going to be generating insurance revenue that's going to be coming into the borough as well.
You hope. My concern is about the EMTs, the areas they're working in. If the the virus is worse in the areas they're coming from and coming into our town, has any of them been checked? Are they been around a lot of the people with the virus? These are things you really got to think about. If you've been in the EMT, you understand that there are times you have to put your ear to their mouth area to hear what they're trying to tell you.
I thought you guys were, I thought you guys were just concerned with the amount of money that we have to pay these guys, and now you guys are concerned with whether or not they're going to bring in the the.
And that should be your concern, too. It's not the money. It that should be your major concern, too.
So it's not the money? It's not the money. It's the money or it's the it's the fact that they could bring in COVID-19?
Are you putting words in my mouth?
No, I'm asking what.
It is the money.
I'm telling you.
Rob, look, all you've done was spend money since you's all gotten in, okay? We were very frivolous.
I don't agree with that. I think I think.
I'm talking about.
You guys don't know what you're talking about.
No, you don't know what you're talking about.
No.
I'm, let's just get through this. I'm talking about bringing EMTs who are actively working. My concern is, knowing about EMTs and paramedics that already have the virus, I was concerned about the people coming in. If they are active in this area, have they been tested? Have people in their group been tested? Is there a lot of outbreak? Where do they come from? Because you're concerned that you want to bring people into this town. I think it's great to have EMTs, but the right now?
Just to update you, you cannot be tested unless you have or showing any symptoms.
That's correct. But they were given EMTs and paramedics the opportunity to get done, too, if they have some kind of.
Exposure.
Yes.
Hire two policemen.
Mr. President, may I weigh in?
I am unsure. I think we might have lost him, but.
Rob, can I weigh in then?
Yeah, absolutely.
So from, we've been taking this coronavirus very seriously as an emergency management level. So myself with the police administration and Mr. Abir with the AMLEs administration, we have set up some pretty good protocols. We do self-screening of each person prior to the workday and in the middle of the workday to eliminate any exposure problems or any food-like symptoms that be sent home. In the meantime, all of our employees are are reminded to maintain their social distance and and provide proper hand washing and disinfecting of the equipment. Plus, the offices are being wiped down, plus each emergency worker has received PPEs. So if we can get more EMTs, the fact that they come in will should not increase our exposure risks.
Chief, do you know if all these EMTs have been passed all their backgrounds and have all their credentials that they need?
I do not. I was not really part of that process.
Oh, are you still on?
We had a committee delegated by Borough Council to check their credentials, and they've done that.
Yes, but you should also give that information to the other council members.
Why?
Because we are also elected officials.
Yes, but you already approved the hiring of these people. That's a council.
Yes, but we should also see their resumes.
We're also more seasoned than you, believe it or not, Glenn.
No. What was the procedure? What's the motion on the floor? Do we have Bill back or not?
I think I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Bill. Is a motion on the floor. I'd like to make the motion that you, to appoint the.
Cannot hear anybody.
Is there anybody that seconded?
Signals out. The signal's out.
We can hear you, Beth. Bill, do you know if all the all these guys have all their credentials?
They have all their credentials, yes.
All background checks were done?
All the background checks are done.
So why wasn't all council notified?
Because all of this is being done with a group that's borough manager, the member of the emergency services, and a representative for the EMS. I have I have not seen resumes. I have not seen background checks. I am I am relying solely on the fact that we've got an EMS director that says he's been, you know, seen all of these backgrounds.
We we get down to the point where we take a vote. We take a vote. We delegate the the task to commit. We from the committee, the committee advertises, brings people in, repeats the records, and now we're back to to what's not following through.
Bill, do you, did you hear the part where we were concerned about the finances of the borough right now with the 1% not coming in?
I heard that part, yes.
Okay, all right. I didn't know where I didn't know where you went out.
I know that there there is a perception here that it's more important to have police than EMTs. I know I know that I picked that up because we are hiring policemen, but we're not hiring EMTs. EMTs are part-time employees. We don't have people coming into our town because the people that are on mutual aid are coming in, and we have no idea if they've been checked, what's going on. So we would be safer if we know who the people that are coming in. We know that the records have been checked, and we we know what their status is.
And your police are also EMTs.
We have already, as a borough, voted on this and moved ahead on it. We can't keep going back.
We're not talking about, I don't even think I can hear.
Yeah, you can. We can hear you, Beth.
Mine just says intermittent, so I don't know. I can't see nobody, so, yeah.
Be thankful.
Well, I can hear you, Beth. So is there a motion on the floor or not?
Are you there, Bill? He's muted, Dawn.
Okay.
I'm here.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I don't know. Did somebody put a motion on the floor?
I did. We made a motion to appoint the nine EMT firefighter part-time candidates. I will name them if necessary.
Go ahead, man.
I will name them Nicholas Ott, Kenneth Hawkins, Cliff Mungatton, Joe Monzo, Steve Young, William Murphy, Tony Gudlin, Don, Dan Hoff. I think Chris second.
Glenn, you. Motion for second?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Councilman Sigda?
No.
Councilwoman Gross? Beth, can you hear me? Beth, are you available? I'll come back to her. Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
I'm a yes.
Vice President Yanazi? Rob, unmute yourself, please.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
No.
Beth, are you there? So should I try calling back?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, Beth. It's Dawn Jones. I have you on speakerphone.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you're. No worries. We figured that, but I need your vote, yes or no, to appoint the nine EMT firefighter part-time candidates.
As long as you feel that they are in their, if they're in contact, they either have been checked or they have been around someone who's had it.
Okay, so I'm not sure which part you, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Making sure they're screened. Correct. So I don't know where you lost touch, but Chief Ed did clarify that both him and Ollie are ensuring that every employee of Eddie Stone Borough is screened prior to the start of any workday and at the end of every workday. is screened prior to the start of any workday and at the end of every workday. All right, Beth. Thank you for that. Would you like to stay on speaker for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah.
That's okay. I'm going to leave you right on top of the laptop, so hopefully you can hear. All right, so.
Dawn, may I ask President Stewart a question?
Um, sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Can I give the count first?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so the ma, motion passes five to two. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
Okay, Bill, we didn't see any of the resumes. And how come the committee that was hiring the E M Ts didn't do a present, a, a presentation like at the executive meetings like we do for the, uh, police? Hello?
I don't think we have a second procedure.
I don't think your name's Bill. I don't think your name's Bill Stewart. I'd like to talk to Bill.
Are you there?
Mr. Stewart.
Can, can you repeat that, Councilman, Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes. We didn't see any resumes. And how come the committee hiring E M Ts didn't make the presentation in an executive session like we do for police?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think the issue there is, is the fact that we're into a pandemic and, and, and social distancing has prohibited us from being able to do that. And a majority of council believes it's important to get fully, fully staffed so that you can provide a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week E M T service. And, you know, you're, you're not going to be able to, to bring a presentation in front of council in the foreseeable future.
Okay, so what part of, we don't have any money, doesn't anybody understand?
I believe that they disagree or the majority of council disagrees with the fact that we, we have budgeted money for 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week E M Ts and the majority of council's looking to just fulfill their commitment.
Well, for the record, make sure this goes in the minutes, Dawn, okay? For the record, when the Eddie Stone Borough is bankrupt, please know that Karen Reeves had nothing to do with it.
This was another issue when we hired the two part-time police officers last month. Has our financial situation changed that drastic?
We budgeted.
Part-time officers, they make 17 bucks an hour. I have no idea. You said that, not me.
They make $15 an hour.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. They're not budgeted. And I can't hear you anyway. I can't hear you, Glenn.
Anyway, Karen.
I couldn't hear you.
Okay.
I didn't hear what you said.
They make $14 an hour, $14.52 an hour.
Okay.
And I'm asking.
And you have police officers that are all trained to be E M Ts.
And they're not doing E M T work.
I wouldn't either. You keep messing with their contract.
I was under the impression that the police weren't doing E M T work because of the COVID-19 situation.
Well, they are. That is the problem right now.
And we also did pay for their training.
Yes, we did. So if they're trained, why don't you let them do it? What?
I don't run the police department.
I lost again. There, he's blanking off.
I'd like to make a adjourn, please.
President Stewart, uh, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, could we, uh, uh, get a status update as to the opening or closing of the fire department?
Hold on one second. What was that, Rob?
Uh, I, the, uh, fire department, whether it's going to be closed, uh, until the end of the COVID-19 situation or is it going to be opened, uh, I just want a status update.
It's Hugues Hall, right?
The fire department.
Negative. Just to bring everybody up to speed on the fire department is, is that we did have a positive exposure down in the firehouse, the borough, on an emergency basis, needed to go in and decontaminate the firehouse as well as the equipment, uh, that's in the firehouse to protect the workers that are down there, the, the, the E M Ts that are down there. We restricted their access to certain areas of the firehouse. And I, and I guess the concern is with the fire department, they would like to start utilizing the, the, the firehouse itself again. Is that correct? Rob, is that?
I would, I would, uh, I would ask TJ to unmute and, uh, uh, tell us a little bit about that.
Okay, um, I would like to, but I have an ambulance call right now. Sorry.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I would like to, but I have an ambulance call right now.
Okay, uh, well, um.
I would guess, you're talking about Joe Hughes Hall, right?
Negative. What we're talking about is, is the firehouse building itself.
Okay. So Borough Hall and Lighthouse Hall are already closed to the public, right?
That is correct.
Do we still have members of the public going in and out of the firehouse?
Negative. The firehouse is restricted to the E M S only.
But when are we, or when are they going to be able to be open? Are they going to maintain, uh, the restriction?
I believe that that restriction would be listed in the event that they have a call that they need to respond to. If there's a fire call and they need to take the engines out at that point in time, they would go in, they would get it, access the engine bay and they would, uh, go on the, on the call accordingly.
In other words, they can't hang out there, right, Bill?
That's, that's a correct assessment.
Okay.
Well, then if there's nothing else, uh, that needs to be said currently, uh, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
What's the second?
I vote for Chris.
I hear you. So Beth, so originally, it, there was not a cost, but, um, Stevie G suggested, um, when I talked with him because I know people had some questions. I'm out. I'm just answering Beth's question. I'm sorry. I still have her on my phone.
Okay, is it okay to close the meeting?
Yes, Stevie G, thank you.
All right, you got it.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.